Welcome to the Oviedo City Council Meeting. If everybody could please rise for the Pledge of Leans.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chief, if you don't mind.
I meant the other chief.
Now Buchanan's off the hook. He's got the job right Jeff. He's doing it great.
Anytime he wants to take over, I'll...
Anytime, right? You can do it.
If you'd like to pray with me, please bow your heads. Dear heavenly Father, we come to you tonight to handle the business of the city. We ask that you place your blessings upon this council, the people here, the citizens of this city as they work to do the business of the city and to make this one of the best places in this country to live. We ask that you also be with the families, the friends, and the people of Alabama and Georgia that were affected by the tornadoes that went through there. Just watch over them, comfort them, guide them, and be with them. We ask you to watch over everybody and protect them as they travel to and from this meeting, to their homes, and we ask you all these things in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Chief. Alrighty. It is about 6:32 PM. I will now call our meeting to order. It is Monday, March 4th. This is the Oviedo City Council Meeting. We have all the members of council present. So at this time, we're going to go right into our ceremonial items. So council, if you can join me down in the front, we have three items tonight.
Alrighty, well, our first recognition this evening is a recognition of Cheyenne Du Charme for winning the 2019 state weightlifting championship over at Hagerty High School. So I'm going to invite her coach up, Mr. Dave Addaway. And Dave, why don't you come on up and you can tell us how this 110-pound young lady lifted 335 pounds.
Lots of hard work. She's been with me for three years. She's trained every single day. She trains...
That was a total, a total lift.
Yeah. She trains every day. She works real hard. She's a leader at her school and the community. She works for me. She coaches. She's got amazing grades and she's going to be a leader wherever she goes.
Well, that is awesome. Cheyenne, come on up. Give her a big round of applause, folks. I feel that's 335 pounds total.
Yeah, total.
Oh, 335 pounds, how? Well, Cheyenne is just awesome and congratulations to you. So you're a senior, right?
Yes.
Where are you going to school?
I was going to go to SSC first and then probably go to UCF.
Well, terrific. What are you going to study? Have you figured that out yet? Are you just going to do general ed at SEC?
Yeah, I'm going to do my AA there and then go and study kinesiology, exercise, physiology at UCF.
Well, that is awesome. Congratulations and great job and thanks for bringing this gold medal home here to Oviedo and Hagerty. Awesome job. So why don't we get Mom and Dad up and let's get some pictures with the council. Everybody kind of sneak in here. Mom, Dad, on either side. Guys, squeeze in. Hey Drew, we have a sister here. Could you take her phone and shoot a picture and let her get up in the picture as well? Yeah, yeah, yeah. You thought you were getting away with it. Nice try.
Oh my God, you're not kidding.
Thank you so much and congratulations, Cheyenne. Great job. This is the next one, Drew? Okay, excellent. Perfect timing. Our next recognition is going to be for Alexis Jones for winning the 2019 state weightlifting championship from Oviedo High School. And Alexis did, she bench pressed a record of 305 pounds here, it says. Clean and jerk was 210 pounds, giving her a total combined weight of 515 pounds. She won the state championship for unlimited weight class lifting 30 pounds or more than the second-place finisher. So I don't know what any of that means, but I'm going to have our coach Danny Evans come on up here and explain it. But it sounds impressive. Danny, come on up. Alexis, come on up.
Hi. I don't, I, sorry, we're a little late here, but just basically with weightlifting, they have two main lifts, a bench press and a clean and jerk. And how you win is your highest total gets added up and that's what happens. And so with Alexis, she had her 305 bench and the 210-pound clean and that added up to get her 515 total. And the girl in second place was, like I said, about 30 pounds below. You know, with Alexis, this is her second year. Last year as a sophomore, she went, she actually placed second overall in the state as a two-time regional champion for her weight class and has another year to go, which is very exciting. So, but that's really about it.
Coach, that is excellent. Congratulations. So you still have one more year to go.
Yes.
One more year? So you're going to weightlift again next year?
Yeah.
Bring home another championship?
Of course.
Alrighty. See, that's what we love, confidence of the Oviedo kids. So why don't we all get a picture together? And do you have any family with you tonight?
Um, yes, I do.
Alrighty, so if you guys want to come on up and get in the picture, hand your phones off and we'll make sure photos are taken for you.
Yeah.
So we have Mom and Grandma, I was told. How are you, Mom?
Where are you going to go?
Come on in. You kind of squeeze in here. We're all moved. We're good. Congratulations. Great job, guys. Thank you all for coming down tonight. Our next recognition is done with a heavy heart, I will say. We had a great personal friend of just about everybody in the chambers here, Frederick Kruger, who's done so much for the city and passed away unexpectedly a few weeks back. And it was really a shock to the whole community, not only the Oviedo Photo Club that he's been a member of, but our Arts Board as well. And so we have a proclamation here. And also, we have Susan Pierce. Where are you, Susan? Why don't you come on up? Susan was a dear friend of Frederick's and it'll be okay. So I'm going to read this for Frederick. I'll present it to you and then we're going to invite everybody up. We'll get a big group picture from the Arts Board and the Photo Club. Alrighties? This is a proclamation from the city of Oviedo and it reads, "Whereas Commander Frederick Kruger, DC, United States Navy, retired, was originally from Kirksville, Missouri, entered the Navy upon graduation from dental school and retired at the rank of commander. And whereas after retiring in 1989, he studied music performance at UCF, obtaining a Bachelor of Arts degree, having piano as his instrument. And whereas he was an active member of the Oviedo community and seen at many city events, participating and showing his support. Whereas he was a member of the Oviedo Photo Club and volunteered his time to help display the permanent exhibition of the Oviedo Photo Club in the city hall and the Annex Building." So all the pictures that are out in the lobby here, folks, that you see Frederick had a big part in, as did his Photo Club members. Whereas he was a member of the Oviedo Historical Society, he was an enthusiastic member of our city's public arts board and a passionate promoter of the arts in general. Whereas he devoted his time to support various charities such as the Hope Helps Food Pantry, you could always find them there, mentoring several high school students, taking photos for the city of Oviedo, Pet Rescue by Judy, Ronald McDonald House, the Optimist Club Sunshine Dances, the St. Luke's Concert Series, the Mays Youth Orchestra, and numerous other organizations with the Oviedo Photo Club and the Orlando Camera Club. Whereas his love and kindness, understanding way brought people together and whereas his loss to the entire Oviedo community. Now therefore, I Dominic Sampea, Mayor of the city of Oviedo, Florida, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim June 9th, 2019, as Frederick Kruger Day in the city of Oviedo and ask that all of our residents honor the memory of Frederick Kruger by continuing to carry out his mission of community involvement and service. And witness thereof, I have signed this and Susan, we're going to present this to you. Now, thank you. It's just awesome. Now, the only thing that they didn't mention there is that Frederick was a heck of a bowler, carried a 100 average, but was there every Tuesday night with us. So why doesn't, why don't we have the Arts Board come on up, the Photo Club come on up, everybody who's here? And we'll just all kind of squish together. Get, Susan, you get right in front.
Okay.
We'll get in the back. Let's get a big group photo. And if I remember, we're having a, there's a celebration of life on March 24th. Alrighty, we're up to item number four, which is the approval of the minutes for February
2:00 PM, Oviedo on the park.
18th, 2019. I'd like to entertain a motion to do so, please.
So moved.
Second. Celebration of Frederick's life is March 24th, 2:00 PM, over at Oviedo on the park. There are motions and multiple seconds. Are there any discussions?
Looks good to me.
I don't take photos like Frederick.
Looks good. Alrighty, hearing none, I'll call the vote. Motion on table is to adopt the minutes from February 18th. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Drew, there's no doubt about that, but thank you for stating the obvious. Aye opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is our public comment portion of the meeting. No, thank you so much, Susan. I have no written requests. Barbara, were there any?
No.
No. No written requests? Give him a big hug. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address council at this time? Thank you so much. Alrighty, guys, that is the end of our ceremonial items. Seeing and hearing none, I will close the public comment portion and move on to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda this evening are items number six through 13. What is the pleasure of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. You have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion?
No, sir. It looks good.
Looks good. Good? Good. Just want to point out that there is an item on here for utility relocations for Lockwood at 419. It's a turn lane improvement project that they're going to start, correct Bobby? Alrighty, that is good to hear. We'll open that intersection up a little bit more out there. Additional turn lanes, if I remember. Come on up, why don't you explain it real quick?
The project itself is actually a county project being constructed on a city roadway because it's an improvement to a county intersection. But what we're doing, this one that's in front of you tonight, is the utility relocation that's being done to move our utilities out of the way of the mass arms that are being relocated.
Great.
This is the first step, first step.
Any questions, Bobby, on that?
So what is the turn lane they're putting in?
They're going to put an additional dedicated right-hand turn lane on northbound Lockwood at 419, right next to 711.
Okay, so they can avoid the backup to the Mitchell-Hammond intersection?
Yes, so right now you have that middle lane that's either a through lane or a right turn. It doesn't get utilized as often. This will give a second dedicated left-hand, right-hand turn, I'm sorry, to go eastbound.
Any plans for a left-hand lane on north Lockwood at Mitchell-Hammond?
It's in design right now.
Is it?
We're going to put it in the CFP for next year construction.
Bobby, the lane that they have there now, it goes straight or turns. Are they just going to make that a turn or...
I think it's going to be, if I remember correctly, on the plan set, you're going to have a four-lane section through there. So your left-hand lane obviously is a dedicated left-hand turn. Then you'll have your straight-through lane to go northbound Lockwood and your two right-hand turn lanes.
Okay, cool.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you, Bobby. Appreciate it.
And also in that consent agenda, re-landscaping of Oviedo Boulevard to make that look nicer. A lot of that stuff is, needs to be replaced, so that got approved as well.
I see that.
Yep.
Alrighty, well, let's call the question and see. The motion on table is to adopt the consent agenda as presented. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Alrighty, moving on to item number 14, which is Resolution Number 3688-19, Station Street Sprint Antenna Special Exception Use. Mr. Cobb, can you help us with this?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request to approve Special Exception Use Order Number 203-19. It's for the installation and replacement of communication panel antenna on the existing water tower in the old downtown area. The subject property is located at 110 Station Street and the Land Development Code requires that when you have communication panel antennas that are greater than two square feet, that requires the issuance of a Special Exception Use Order. Each of these, each of the six communication antenna that are located on the tower are above two square, two square feet. The purpose of the special exception is to allow for, to account for all six antenna that are on the, on the tower, but also to allow for replacement of three of the antenna that need to be replaced. The staff reviewed the Special Exception Use Request per the Land Development Code and found that, that it was compatible per the Land Development Code criteria. And the land, local planning agency held a public hearing at its February 5th, 2019 meeting and recommended approval of the Special Exception Use Order. The staff also recommends approval of the use order based on its findings presented in your report. It's recommended that city council conduct a public hearing and adopt Resolution Number 3688-19.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. This is a public hearing. I have no written requests. Is there anybody who'd like to address council on Resolution Number 3688-19? Seeing and hearing none, I will close the public comment portion and move on to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Make a motion to approve Resolution Number 3688-19.
Second. You have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion? Deputy Mayor?
Looks good.
Councilman Chudnow?
That's fine.
Everybody on the left-hand side? My left is good? Alrighty. Mr. Cobb, as you stated, we're not adding anything else to the tower. These things have been there for years and years and years. We're just cleaning it up.
Yes, it is. It's bringing them into conformance.
Alrighty, great. Well, we appreciate it. The motion on, well, excuse me, if there's any further discussion?
No.
Motion on table is to adopt. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries. Moving along, we have a couple of first readings of ordinances. The first one is ordinance number 1680. It's amending Chapter 34 of our pensions and retirement for the Oviedo Police Officers' Pension Fund. Mr. Cobb?
Yeah, as you go to...
You may want to have Mr. Group.
Yeah, it's kind of backwards here, but... Mr. Group, can you read this ordinance by title only, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance Number 1680, An Ordinance to the City of Oviedo, Florida, Amending Chapter 34, Pensions and Retirement, Article 2, Relating to the Police Officers' Retirement Fund, Amending Section 34-21, Board of Trustees, Amending Section 34-26, Disability, Amending Section 34-36, Miscellaneous Provisions, Amending Section 34-47, Reemployment After Retirement, Amending Section 34-48, Deferred Retirement Option Plan, Providing for Implementing Administrative Actions, Providing for Savings Provision, Providing for Conflict, Providing for Separability, Providing for Codification, as well as the Correction of Scrivener's Errors, and Providing an Effective Date. And that's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Group. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. The two primary purposes of this ordinance is to incorporate into our police pension plan changes that were made by the Florida statutes, part of Florida legislature when they made changes to Chapter 185 Florida statutes. Also, there have been some changes in the IRS rules and so we need to make some changes as well to accommodate those. One of the things that would call to your attention is that it does increase the term of our Board of Trustee members from two years to four years and it also addresses the city's drop program that was recently implemented. Tonight, the city council is asked to, to schedule a public hearing for Monday, April 1st, 2019.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Cobb. This time I'd like to entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing for April 1st, 2019, at 6:30 PM here at Oviedo City Hall in the Oviedo City Council Chambers, 400 Alexandria Boulevard, Oviedo, Florida, 32765, at approximately 6:30 PM. So moved. Second. May I have a motion and a second? Any discussion?
I just have one question for Mr. Group. Seeing that I am, was a past member and a recipient of the pension, is that, does that place me in a place I should recuse myself from this vote?
No, sir. You do not have a conflict of interest voting on this.
Alrighty, good to hear. Alrighty, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the vote. Schedule the public hearing for April 1st, 2019, 6:30 PM here at Oviedo City Hall. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries. Moving along. Item number 16, another scheduling, first reading of an ordinance. This is Ordinance Number 1681, Amending Chapter 34, Pensions and Retirement, Oviedo Firefighters' Pension Fund. Surprise, surprise. Mr. Group, can you read this by title only, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An Ordinance to the City of Oviedo, Florida, Amending Chapter 34, Pensions and Retirement, Article 3, Firefighters' Pension Trust Fund of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Oviedo, Amending Section 34-68, Definitions, Amending Section 34-70, Board of Trustees, Amending Section 34-74, Pre-Retirement Death, Amending Section 34-75, Disability, Amending Section 34-84, Miscellaneous Provisions, Amending Section 34-94, Reemployment After Retirement, Amending Section 34-95, Deferred Retirement Option Plan, Amending Section 34-96, supplemental benefit component for special benefits, Chapter 175, Share Accounts, Providing for Implementing Administrative Actions, Providing for Savings Provision, Providing for Conflict, Providing for Separability, Providing for Codification, as well as the Correction of Scrivener's Errors, and Providing an Effective Date. And that's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Group. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. As with the other ordinance, this ordinance also has the same purpose of implementing revisions that the Florida legislature made, this time Chapter 175 of Florida statutes, as well as implementing the IRS changes too. This ordinance also, just to call to your attention, this does also increase the terms for the Board of Trustee members from two to four years and then it also takes care of the other sections that were described by Mr. Group. Tonight, we're asked that you schedule a public hearing for April 1st, 2019.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing for Ordinance Number 1681, here at Oviedo City Hall in the Oviedo City Council Chambers on April 1st, 2019. That would be at 400 Alexandria Boulevard, Oviedo, Florida, 32765, at approximately 6:30 PM. So moved. Second. You have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the vote to schedule the public hearing for April 1st, 2019, 6:30 PM here at Oviedo City Hall. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries. Moving along, we're up to our resolution. Alrighty, so it's item number 17. This is Resolution Number 3699-19, Remedial Site Development Order Number 496-19 for the Evans Square subdivision. Mr. Cobb, can you help us out with this?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for the city council to approve the removal of a 30-inch laurel oak tree on Lot 2, a 40-inch live oak tree on Lot 3, a 25-inch southern magnolia on Lot 4, and a 24-inch rain tree pecan tree on Lot 29 of the Evans Square subdivision. The applicant, property owner, is David Weekly Homes LLC. Lots 2, 3, and 4 are located on Hill Creek Street and Lot 29 is located on South Lake Jessup Avenue. At your April 18th to 2016 meeting, city council adopted Resolution 3163-16, approving the Site Development Order Number 459-16, which approved the preliminary subdivision plan for the Evans Square development. This was a 30-lot, single-family residential subdivision. It also has a, one property that is a foundation use. The preliminary subdivision plan called for the preservation of the trees that are being asked for removal. At its May 1st, 2017 meeting, the city council adopted Resolution Number 3410-17, approving Site Development Order Number 476-17, and that was to allow two trees on lots 11 and 12 of the subdivision to be removed and replaced with three 4-inch caliber bald cypress trees in the subdivision's retention area. A developer also requested the removal of five trees that were located on lots 1, 2, 3, 4, and 28 that were impacted by the mass grading of the subdivision. The city council denied this request, maintaining the prior approval that the trees be preserved. That site development order actually states in there that the trees would be removed, would be preserved. The applicant, in this case, request includes a letter from a certified arborist concluding that the subject trees will not survive the impacts of development. Therefore, the arborist recommends removal of the trees, replacing them with what he terms as healthy at-grade trees. Staff reviewed the request and found that the LDC, you know, Land Development Code, requires the following replacement schedule for the trees. The 30-inch laurel oak tree, the Land Development Code defines it as a heritage tree, which means, which means mitigation is an inch for diameter, inch replacement. This results in 12 trees. A minimum replacement tree is two and a half inches. So a 30-inch tree would require, an inch for inch would require 12 trees for removal, for mitigation. The 40-inch live oak tree is also considered a heritage tree by the Land Development Code. Once again, it's an inch for inch mitigation and it requires 16 trees. The 25-inch magnolia tree requires four trees. The 28-inch rain tree pecan tree requires four trees. For a total of 36 trees to be for mitigation of the, of the removal. Rather than planting the LDC-required two-and-a-half-inch caliber replacement tree, staff recommended that the applicant plant more mature trees on the four lots. The Land Development Code allows you, if you plant a 4-inch tree, that can count as two, or if you plant a 6-inch tree, that would count as three. In accordance with the recommendation, the applicant does propose to plant two 6-inch caliber trees on each affected lot. And in addition to the required trees that are, that are supposed to be planted on the lot by the preliminary subdivision. Attachments 4, 5, 6, and 7 on, in your packet, those show the different plot plans for lots 2, 3, 4, and 29, with, and it shows how the proposed 6-inch trees will be placed in the lots. Staff softly recommended that the applicant plant 36 replacement trees in addition to those two proposed trees. The applicant chose to do the option of funds in lieu of, and as will pay nine, is offered to pay $9,000 into the city's tree bank. Staff recommended that the applicant also construct shade structures over the park bench and the two picnic tables in the park that is located in Evans Square, in the Evans Square neighborhood. The park is an open space park. It has a walking path. It has a, in the entrance, it does have a bench. The trees around the bench, it's a very nice, nice welcoming entrance. The trees around the bench are palm trees. They do not provide a whole lot of shade. There are also two, in the walking path, there are two picnic tables that have no shade over them whatsoever. The primary trees in the park are pine trees. Once again, they're not exactly what you'd call a shade tree. So the staff recommended that to compensate for the loss of shade of removing especially the heritage trees... staff recommended that the applicant plant more mature trees on the four lots. The Land Development Code allows you, if you plant a 4-inch tree, that can count as two. Or if you plant a 6-inch tree, that can count as three. In accordance with the recommendation, the applicant does propose to plant two 6-inch caliber trees on each affected lot, and in addition to the required trees that are supposed to be planted on the lot by the preliminary subdivision. Attachments 4, 5, 6, and 7 on, in your packet, those show the different plot plans for lots 2, 3, 4, and 29. It shows how the proposed 6-inch trees will be placed in the lots. Staff softly recommended that the applicant plant 36 replacement trees in addition to those two proposed trees. The applicant chose to do the option of funds in lieu of, and as we'll pay, is offered to pay $9,000 into the city's tree bank. Staff recommended that the applicant also construct shade structures over the park bench and the two picnic tables in the park that is located in Evans Square, in the Evans Square neighborhood. The park is an open space park. It has a walking path. It has, in the entrance, it does have a bench. The trees around the bench, it's a very nice, welcoming entrance. The trees around the bench are palm trees. They do not provide a whole lot of shade. There are also two, in the walking path, there are two picnic tables that have no shade over them whatsoever. The primary trees in the park are pine trees. Once again, they're not exactly what you would call a shade tree. So, the staff recommended that, to compensate for the loss of shade of removing especially the heritage trees, that they put shade structures over these individual equipment to compensate for that. Staff also recommended that the applicant donate $50,000 to the Friends of Oviedo for community-wide programs. One of the things that staff noticed was that these trees, the purpose of their function, I guess function is a better word, the function of these trees was street trees. So, it is a community impact with the removal of these trees. And so, that was, the donation to Friends of Oviedo was recommended. The applicant has not responded to either of those recommendations. Resolution 3699-19 approves the remedial site development order number 496-19, which approves the removal of the subject trees with conditions that reflect the mitigations that were accepted by the applicant. The remedial site development order requires the following. It allows the removal of the four trees, requires the applicant to plant the two 6-inch caliber trees on each of the effective lots in addition to the required trees from the preliminary subdivision plan, and then it also requires the applicant to pay $9,000 into the city's tree bank. Now, city council's directive, when it approved the preliminary subdivision plan and when it approved the site development order 476-17, which allowed for the removal of the trees on lots 11 and 12, was that the trees that are proposed for removal would be preserved. That was city council's direction. As such, any request to remove these trees is considered a change to the council's policy. The policy, this is a policy decision of the city council. The tree protection requirement was imposed as a development approval condition of the city council. So, any modification of that development approval condition is a request to change the policy. Therefore, staff tonight seeks your direction regarding Resolution 3619 and remedial site development order number 496-19.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Is the applicant present? Do you have anything to add?
Please.
Come on up.
Thank you very much. Yes, I do.
Just name the address for the record, please.
Excuse me?
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Stephen Halford.
Address?
Address is 1930 Americas Minor Drive, Winter Garden, Florida. Sorry, this is my first time in such a place.
No, no worries.
Might tell by the accent, I'm not actually originally from here. Yeah, so...
I'm sorry, you're the one who asked to come down here and do this.
I am the one who asked to come down, yes. So, I'm the builder for David Weekly Homes in Evans Square. I took over the development in mid-November. And upon taking over, I met with Michael here, who does all of our landscaping. And we looked at each lot to discuss the tree wells that we understood needed to be built. Upon looking at the trees, we recognized that they were either dying, were dead, or in some sort of a bad shape. So, but we also looked at the tree well. We brought in our arborist to take a look. We recognized that the tree wells had to be a certain size within the lot. That size meant that the tree wells actually went into the property itself, would either go into the driveways or would go into the sidewalks, which we know we couldn't do. So then we had to refer the discussion, again, bringing the arborist out again to look at the actual trees. One of the trees, Lot 2, is hollow inside. It's my surprise that the tree hasn't fallen down yet, whether on the power lines directly in front or onto the home behind it. And we found this for most of the trees. We don't develop our own land. We buy the lots from the developer. So, when the developer handed over to us with the understanding that this is what would be, the development itself was actually graded higher than the roots of the trees themselves. So, about two years ago, the tree started dying. And it's only as we took over the development that we recognized that these trees will not last after bringing in the arborist to discuss the way forward. So, upon discussing with the team here at the city, we tried to come up with a resolution, which is to plant live oak trees in place, large oaks. It's costing a fair amount of money to make sure that we can do it. Two trees to replace the one tree, as well as paying into the tree fund. Yeah. Michael, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Okay. Michael here is the landscaper for David Weekly.
What about the other remediation that staff asked for that you haven't responded to?
For, excuse me?
Staff asked for, let's see, shade structures?
Yeah, for the shade. Well, part of this is, I've never been in a meeting such as this before, so I wasn't really sure of how things go. I didn't know whether I was going to be addressing the neighbors, whether I'd be addressing yourselves.
Right. Now, I understand. I'll work, let me help you. Their, staff asked for three shade structures and a $50,000 donation to the Friends of Oviedo.
Yes.
In addition to the other remediation that you've offered.
That's correct.
And you have not responded to that. So, now I'm asking, what is your response to that? It's not a discussion, it's a yes or a no.
Okay. Can I come up with a different amount? So, my discussion, my amount would be half that, which would be $25,000 to the local charity. It was in a phone conversation, nothing was written. So, I wasn't able to just then go ahead and pass that over to my management team. I needed something in writing in order to pass that over to them and to get that approval from our fund for David Weekly. I mean, that's negotiable, so...
And the shade structures?
And the shade, and a shade structure, which was a tree, which was our verbal discussion. If we want to go ahead and discuss further for some sort of different shade, that'd be good. It was my understanding with speaking to management that it was discussed before, and the reason they didn't put a large tree in place was because of birds sitting in those trees over a shaded area, and, excuse my French, but pooping on people's heads is what was said to me.
Okay.
Especially for young families. So, that's why palm trees were put in place, which over time, we're hoping that it would give some sort of shade without the birds coming in like they would an alive oak.
Alrighty. Well, that's understandable. Do you have anything else to add?
Nope, I don't.
Alright. We might recall you in just a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Barbara, do we have any requests to speak on this item?
Yes.
Alrighty. So, what is the pleasure of counsel on Resolution 3699-19?
Mr. Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, Brian, just help me out with this. So, I just want to make sure I got this right. So, obviously, when we approved that subdivision, the trees were a big deal, you know?
Yes, sir.
The chambers was packed, and we did everything we could do to save those trees. So, is this staff's recommendation, if I'm reading this right, so they're going to pay $9,000 into the tree bank, they're going to plant two of these big 6-inch trees on four lots, so that's eight, plus the 36 trees? Is that what we're going to be getting?
The, no. The applicant, what the order requires is the planting of the two additional trees on each lot, the 6-inch caliber trees on each lot. And that would be in addition to the required landscape of the each lot.
Right.
And then, instead of planting the 36 trees, they will pay the $9,000 into the tree bank.
Okay, alright. That's what I thought you were going to say. So, I wanted to confirm. So, for me, this is quite easy. I mean, that is such a historic part of Oviedo. You know, people didn't like the development. We were sho-
Why don't we get a motion?
Alright, well, I'm going to make a motion that we require them to plant the 36 trees. You know, I get, you know, I really need some more help on this one. You know, the 50 to 25, I mean, you know, that's fine, you know, for me. I mean, I'll just make the motion. I think we need to require them to put the 36 trees back as the code requires. You need as many trees up in that part of town as we can. So, if that is the mitigation, 36 trees, I'll take the $25,000 for the donation. That seems fair. Now, Brian, would they still be required to pay the $9,000 if they put the 36 trees in?
If you so direct, if you direct them to, usually, under the Land Development Code, you can either plant the trees or pay into the city tree fund. So, if you direct them to plant the 36 trees, then no, they would not be paying the $9,000.
Okay, well, then this is easy for me. I make the motion that we require them to put the 36 required trees back so that that area gets its shade canopy, for lack of a better word, back, and the $25,000 donation to the Friends of Oviedo. And then the shade structures over the park bench, as the mayor pointed out. That's basically my motion. They don't have to pay into the tree bank, but I want the trees.
Alright, so you're making a motion to adopt Resolution 3699-19 with the following changes.
Correct.
36 trees instead of the $9,000 payment to the tree bank.
Correct.
Your motion is $25,000 to the Friends of Oviedo. Your motion will be for the shade structure, as well as all the other trees that were already required.
As part of the plan.
As part of the-
Correct, yes.
So, that's your motion. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Alright, we're in motion and a second. I'll go to Councilman Britton.
Okay. I just, maybe Teresa, is Teresa here? Maybe we can get some clarification on whether the 36 trees would live or die anyway, because I'm not exactly sure why we're allowing them not to be made.
Well, good evening. The 36 trees are the calculation for the restoration, for the removal of those four trees, because they are large in caliber, they equate to more trees, right? Now, to replant on site, we'll have to revisit the landscape plan to see if there is space, right?
That's my question.
To be able to have healthy trees. And that's why the code allows the payment into the tree bank, because the city is balanced.
So, we can plant them somewhere else where there is space?
Exactly.
Is that the point? So...
Well, then I can, then I can, Mr. Mayor?
Well, go with what you got. I'm going to help you out.
Okay.
Alright. That's what I wanted to find out, whether there is actually space inside of the development to plant the 6 more trees, or whether it may be better to take the donation to the tree fund and allow us to plant it where there is space.
Okay. That's a fair point. Let's go up and down and see what we can do. Go down to Councilman Chudnow.
I'm going to approach this from a little different way. As Mr. Cobb said, the preservation of those trees was what the council mandated at the time. We're being told that the trees are not healthy by an arborist who we didn't hire, who's working basically for, who's managing the properties at the moment. And maybe it's just because things don't, the trees were healthy, now they're not. Maybe it's because of my prior employment that I'm suspicious of things like that. So, what I would like to see is an arborist of our choosing at their cost, reevaluate those trees and give us a independent opinion on the health of the trees and whether those trees in that environment would be sustainable.
Can I add something to that?
Hang on a second. Let me just get down with Chief's point, please. Councilman Britton, yes, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, I was having the same thoughts, but whether the degradation of the trees as a result of the developers' grading is a question that comes into my mind.
Exactly.
And whether they're going to die because they're old or they're going to die because they got, they overgraded to them to damage them. And if we're going to get an arborist out there, maybe we can make that determination.
Okay. Second?
Yes, Brian?
Yes.
It appears, I mean, from reading this and from the discussion already, that it was because of the grading that they're having the issue. The thing that bothered me a little bit when applicant was up here was, he was talking about one of the tree wells and saying that it needed to be bigger, and it can't be bigger because of a structure or a road or something. And to me, I, you know, I don't, you know, the initial council's decision was to save the trees. And so, if the well has to be bigger, you know, and a structure has to be smaller, so be it. I'm not concerned about, you know, the buildable area, per se, if the trees originally were supposed to be preserved. If, and that, and to Councilman Chudnow's point, if the, if an arborist said all these trees, if our choosing said that all these trees are dying or dead or there's no way to recover from the condition they're in, then that's one thing. But if it's just because there's not a large enough well or they need to make a bigger well, then we need to evaluate it that way. But I'm just, at this point, I would like to make sure that this is a foregone conclusion, that these trees are dead. And not just that they're in a position where they're inconvenient for the developer.
For the builder.
For the builder, yes.
Anything else, Bob?
And then, you know, if they are dead or dying, I don't necessarily know if 36 trees, like Councilman Britton said, if 36 trees, you know, would, there's enough area, because the last thing you want to do is plant 36 trees right on top of each other and then have them die as well. So, you know, I'd be okay with the tree bank, to pay into the tree bank for those trees if there's not room for them to be on there. And I read in here somewhere that, you know, if they're larger calibers, that they count for two trees if you plant them, so you don't have to have the two and a half inch, you could have the larger caliber trees. But, you know, to that point, I think we just, I'm just concerned, you know, that these trees are inconvenient and that they may, there still may be some life left in them. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Bob. Well, I mean, I'm kind of on the same track as everybody here, to be very frank. And my disappointment goes a little bit further than what's been expressed, because the, when this development was approved, you know, it was approved with the trees being preserved. Period and a sentence, was non-negotiable. What the developer did, didn't do, we addressed at a later date and allowed two of them to come out. And they dug wells, assured us everything was going to be okay, and that's what was agreed to. So, when Weekly took this neighborhood over or bought these lots, that's the agreement you inherited, like it or not. We were assured that homes would be built to fit on the lot and not affect the trees. David Weekly chose not to do that. I went out there and looked. You built the house right on top of the trees. So that was your choice to kill the trees, not ours. I, I'm not happy with any of this, because I don't think the penalty's severe enough. Because, you know, based on, on this, then any order we place, everybody just ignores. And that wasn't the case, wasn't our intent. Out in the Riverside subdivision, it was a similar, similar situation back in the nineties, where the developer actually just didn't build a house on a lot and save a big tree. You can go out there, I think Oakhurst Court, isn't it, Brian?
Yes, sir.
Go out on Oakhurst Court.
No, Maggie's.
Oh, Maggie's?
Maggie's.
Okay, Maggie's, that, you lived there. Right, Maggie's Court, there's a lot, no house, and this big, huge, two-hundred-year-old oak tree, I don't know what it is, it's, it's, it's a gigantic tree. You guys could've done that, you chose not to. So why, why is that the community's problem? Why, why should we sit here and say, we'll take nine thousand dollars, let you plant a few extra trees and, and call it a day? Now, Mr. Groot, they, they violated our order, so I'm assuming there must be, we can probably order construction at a halt for now until we work this out, or something. There has to be something that we can do. Can you help me with this?
Well, there's other legal remedies and, and an array of code enforcement remedies which we've discussed, um, from significant fines to daily fines to lawsuits, injunctive relief.
Well, you know, I, I, I'm just looking at these huge oak trees that were very important to the folks who live in that area, and I don't live there, but I represent them, and they were here, uh, and this was part of the compromise for the subdivision. Subdivision was allowed, it was R-one zoning, we can debate that till the end of time. But this is what was offered to the community, that we would save all those trees, already two of them are gone. Okay, now you've told us that you've killed, and that's what you said, standing right there, that maybe not David Weekly itself, but the developer, on actions against what this council ordered, killed the trees. And so now you just want us to make it go away, and I, I'm, I'm not prepared to do that. I, I would propose a fine of twenty-five thousand dollars per house into the Friends of Oviedo, replant the trees, and pay into the tree bank. But I don't think we're gonna be able to make all those decisions here tonight. I, you know, I'm not sure if we're going to be able to get there, but, uh, you know, twenty-five thousand, that's a, that's, that's a nice offer, but, uh, you know, sorry, you guys created this, that, this is what you bought. You know, the other thing you could do is just knock the houses down, replant the forest on each lot and dedicate it to the HOA. I mean, that's a choice. You know, we, 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 we're very workable with developers in the city when it comes to trees, because we require so many trees. But, you know, when it comes to these heritage trees, the whole purpose of saving those was to preserve that tree canopy that's now gone. And, uh, you know, that's disappointing. Sure, why don't you come on up?
And we did ask for an arborist from the city, but you don't have an arborist, which is why we, we hired an arborist to come out and do it, who is, you know, licensed with the state. Um, he wasn't just some guy that I randomly picked, he was some, you know, so, um, did you have an arborist check out the trees before the developer developed the, the lot? I, I don't know the answer, but.
They, they were perfectly healthy, thriving.
Did an arborist say that? Was that a, a message we got from the arborist? Because I don't know whether or not, because Lot Two, that tree's been dying for a lot longer than, it appears to be dying for a lot longer than before we even started developing. The inside of it is literally hollow.
Sure.
It's been seeping, uh, um, what's it called? Sap for, for quite a while, so I, I can't tell whether we did that. My only point being is, we may be doing, excuse me, but we may be doing something good here as opposed to just taking away some trees that are part of the community for a very long time, which I totally understand that. I come from a place which is full of trees everywhere to see, one single tree cut down is heartbreaking. Um, and so I understand when a builder comes in, we just assume that builders always get their way. We did inherit from a developer, and I inherited from the previous builders before me, when it comes to the tree wells, the houses are already built, they're there, they're already in place, so it's not like we are able to put a tree well in place.
Who, who built the house?
David Weekly built the houses. So we're responsible for building the homes. What I was just making reference to was to Mr. Pollak's statement about, uh, can the, the trees continue to survive if we put a tree well in place? The tree well has to be a certain size based upon the canopy. I did come in at a much later date within David Weekly. It wasn't until myself started looking at the trees as a builder within David Weekly that I actually brought people in to try and save these trees, and upon looking at the trees, we realized that we cannot build a tree well or save them under any circumstances, simply because if anything had been done, it should've been done at development, and those trees should not have been buried by the developer, which was then handed over to us as we bought each lot. Um, I do take into account the twenty-five thousand dollars and, uh, what you had to say as well in regards to fines, so I do understand that there's an ordinance which is written for, um, you know, for the whole development going forward. I understand it wasn't popular development with some locals, some neighbors around the area, um, but much like the Evans family had made statement before, that when name, when the surrounding area moved in to that area, the Evans family were the family that didn't want people moving in to their neighborhood. And this is the same thing for us, every time we build, someone else moves into a new neighborhood. And, you know, we've, we've built twenty, uh, twenty-nine beautiful homes within a community in a park, and we're happy to put those trees within the, within the park for, for shade and to do what we need to do to make things right. Um, I understand we can't take back the trees that are already damaged, I wish I could, but we're not able to do that. And so our understanding is with the arborists, with our tree specialists, who are independent, they're not paid by us, they're their own individual groups, yeah, we hire them to do work within our community, but they're their own company that we hire to do the work. They're the ones that are suggesting this, uh, that we take care of this. So it wasn't something I conjured up, it's something that they, they gave me in writing as licensed arborist with the state, because one was not able to be provided for by the city, which is what I asked for.
Wow. Any comments?
Mr. Mayor? Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, I, we, we sat here, um, gosh, when was the last, the, a couple of years ago?
Yeah.
A year and a half ago, something like that, um, with the developer about some of these lots, these specific lots. And we talked about the structures that were going on the lots, and we were assured that the structures were gonna be small enough that would've provided for those wells. And the, the, the builder, David Weekly, told us that and built what they wanted instead. And that's what I think we're all upset about.
Yep.
Uh, because there would've, there should've been and would've been room for the wells if the, 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 the structures that were put on those lots were, were what we were told were gonna go there. So that, I mean, that's why we're upset, and that's why the, the trees are dying. I mean, there was, I, I, there was a problem with the builder when, or the developer when they developed the, the site, but it just got worse by David Weekly. And these trees are, you know, are, are suffering for it, the, the canopy, and, and it was all not necessary.
Right.
That's why we're upset.
Okay, so. Are you, um, are you authorized to make decisions tonight on the fifty thousand and the nine thousand?
All I'm authorized to do is to hear what you have to say and then pass it on to our team. So whatever the recommendation is that you give, I then pass it on to David Weekly himself, not necessarily him, but our, our team, and they deal with the charity side of David Weekly. Um, so my project manager gave me the authority to come and speak to you, and the way our, our division is set up is we have.
I understand, well, you know what I was, you know, and I, I completely understand where the mayor was, you know, and this, this might be before Councilman Chudnow and Pollak's time, but Mr. Mayor, you'll remember this in Keith, you know, we had our former police chief stand up here who lived in that neighborhood and came in here multiple times, and his wife, who used to sit on this council that lived on Hillcrest, and they warned us years ago that when they were clearing this, this lot, that they were filling over these trees and not letting them breathe.
Right.
You know, and I can remember Chuck coming up here, and he very rarely did that, but he was so passionate, and he told us, "Council, they're killing these trees." So, you know, I would just say this, I made the motion, "I think you're a good guy, and I believe that you got an arborist out, but maybe we'll just change a few things," because I could see, try to get some closure here. Look, what's done is done, I have no doubt those trees are dead, because I know that whether it was you or somebody else, they've been killing them for years. And they told us, and we actually had to stop the work at one time, so I'm gonna just take this, and Mr. Mayor, this may satisfy, but to amend my motion a little bit, and then if you.
He, he's not authorized to agree with anything, so we can't.
Oh, no, you'll, you'll understand, I'm, but, but take note of what I'm gonna say. So first of all, I think that until we can get this taken care of, what do you think you need, two weeks, a week? Because we meet again, uh, well, we actually don't meet now until April first.
Well, as soon as possible, I've got, that whole, we're closing out the community, and I understand that you can totally put a stop to all of the work that we're doing, you know, no building finals, we're right at building finals for, for, uh, two, three, for three of those homes on Hillcrest, and one home which is supposed to close in three weeks' time in, on South Lake Jessup Road, three-twenty South Lake Jessup.
Well, I don't wanna, you know, you know what, I don't wanna inconvenience future families that are coming into our city because of some stuff, so I'm.
Which is my, which is really my concern for those people.
I'm gonna amend the motion, you know, what I would like to see done, and you're gonna have to bring it back to your people, and we're gonna have to get this on April first, but to try to address the concerns that I'm hearing from everybody else. I don't doubt those trees are good, and I don't doubt that you're a sincere guy and you brought the arborist out there, but here's, here's, here's what I would like to do if I could, Mr. Mayor, Mayor?
Sure.
So.
You're amending your motion?
I'm amending the motion. So thirty-six trees is what the code requires. So, Council, to Councilman Britton's point, I'd like the motion to be, to put back as many trees as the lots will handle, that those, as big and as many as we can get that will survive and will grow up to be like, no, no, they're not gonna, it's gonna take a long time to get them where they were, but you follow my drift, as many and as big as we can that, that can fit on that lot, that's number one. To address the mayor's concerns, there really should be some penalty, you inherited it, whether it's your fault or not, some, it's yours now, so that you would do the fifty thousand and pay the nine thousand into the tree bank. I think, you have to remember one thing, houses are good and, and, and business is good, but when you, when you take, uh, those visual effects away from people who, who love the his, history of that, that was a very hard vote for all of us that were here that time, so we're gonna try to fix it the way that, so if we can get as many trees as we can, the nine thousand paid in into the tree bank, the fifty thousand to the Friends of Oviedo, that would be my motion to, to go, go on. And you can keep working, but on April first, if this is not agreed to, we're gonna put a stop work order out there, until we can get something done.
What about those homes that are, will be closed by that point, by April first? So we have Lot, uh, twenty-nine and, uh, I think, number five, right at that point. And number three is a, don't have a buy for that yet?
Nobody's, nobody's agreed to anything yet, so just.
Yeah, that's, I'm just, I'm just trying to bring everybody together.
This is just one member.
Yeah.
Putting a motion on the table.
Okay, gotcha.
So that's, that's it, Mr. Mayor?
And I'm assuming the, the two trees per lot that staff has already recommended.
Correct, yes.
Plus the two trees per lot.
Correct. I mean, we have to move on to this now, it's not, it's not good, but I mean, for years, whoever's been out there digging and, and doing it has been killing those trees, we know that, you know, because we had residents come up here and we tried to stop it, you know, when we did have our arborist, so.
Could I, could I ask you to amend your motion one step further?
Yes.
That they provide us a remediation plan, and no COs are issued until we approve it come April first.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Agreed. I just have, have one quick question, and, and if I'm understanding, the homes where these trees are, where, you started building those homes, correct? At David Weekly?
Me personally or David Weekly?
It's David Weekly.
Yes.
Okay. Foundations, that's the.
Yeah, David Weekly's been the builder from the beginning.
Okay, so the tree wells, you knew that when you built those, it was too close to the tree wells.
Not necessarily, no, because the way that we've built other tree wells depended on the size of the canopy.
Well, and that, because that's what you said.
Yeah.
You said that the, uh, the tree wells are the canopy and that you couldn't change it now, but before you started building, you knew how, how, what the canopy was, so you would know what the tree well was.
Not necessarily, so.
All right, so, so, now I'm getting confused, if, because that's what you said, you have to, you couldn't amend the tree well or change it, because the structure's there, but the tree was there before the structure.
Yes.
So you should have looked at that tree well and said, "I can't build it there because the tree well needs to be so far," correct?
Well, Lot, Lot number three, for example, we moved as far back on the property as we possibly could, and my understanding is, bear in mind, I, I'd, I'd taken on these lots from a previous builder, from previous individual builder, not David Weekly, but.
Well, I understand that.
Yeah, um, so looking at that, when we came along to take a look at them, ideally, the tree well should've been built initially before the land was developed, where the canopy would've been smaller and before, so, so, yeah, I, I can't, I'm not willing to take full responsibility for that, because I wasn't there in the beginning when we started building this.
I'm not saying you personally.
Yeah. But on behalf of David Weekly, I'm not willing to take that on, just because I don't wanna say the wrong thing on behalf of David Weekly.
Well, you're already, uh, gave me the answer.
Sure, thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Yes?
I just wanted, so you work, do you work for David Weekly?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, and there was.
That, that development is my responsibility as the builder for David Weekly, I'm not.
I'm just trying to get clear in my mind, was there another, another builder out there before David Weekly came on board?
No, it's always been David Weekly Homes.
Okay, so, you know, if I, if I can get it in my mind right, the developer went out there and graded and did the development, and that's probably where the problem started.
That's correct.
Um, and my question, Mr. Groot, I think maybe this is for you, is there any, uh, avenue for us to seek, uh, or seek, uh, payment or fines from the developer, or is that water under the bridge?
I, I would think they own it now, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, it's now the property owner that would be in violation.
Okay, so, you know, I think you got a, you got a good argument with the developer, and maybe you need to go back to him and, and say, "Hey, look, here was, here is what we're supposed to do, but you didn't do it."
So in regards to your April first, uh, when we take a look, no COs until April first, are we still able to continue to build with the trees on site? So what is, the trees are not in the way of us continuing and completing the building of the home?
Well, we're not gonna cut the trees down, are we?
Well, I mean, we're not, if no one's cutting the trees down, can we still close in the home with the trees still in place?
No.
Okay.
Once you close that home, then you're, you're done with it.
Right.
Sorry.
Okay.
That, that would be, I mean, I have to ask the council, but that would be my opinion, I was the one who brought that up. Uh, I know that's a burden, but so is this. I mean, quite frankly, we've been debating this for, you know, forty-five minutes, you know, ourselves, yourself, people in the audience have other things to do.
Sure.
And you inherited this, you knew those trees are supposed to, to stay there, not you personally, when we say you, we mean David Weekly.
Yeah.
Uh, to Councilman Chudnow's point, you know, you put the foundations in, you knew you were doing this. You know, I, you could sit here and tell us you didn't, but you knew it. I mean, let's just admit it. I mean, you can admit it, I understand, but, uh, it's unfortunate, we can't bail you out, and yes, there's gonna be somebody who wants to close on a home very upset, but you can explain it to them why.
Sure.
So, any other questions for the gentleman?
I just gotta say, with those trees in the report, I mean, I think one or two of them, your arborist said that it's danger of falling too, right?
Lot Two especially, that's the one that has been dead, in, in, having grown up around trees, that started dying way before two years ago.
So, so, so listen, so this is, this probably wasn't your most pleasant first meeting coming here, we're, we're usually not like this, but this is, this is, this was a serious one because of the history of this neighborhood. For me, the blame is already there, we know what happened, we've known this going on for two years, and we've tried to correct it, we've stopped the work out there, and, and honestly, David Weekly just said, "Screw it, we're not gonna deal with it," for lack of a better word. So for me, I wanna get the people who are buying those houses and this fixed. So I think my motion was, the original one before I heard some of the concerns, would've been fine, but having heard that, I think fines and penalties, that if you pay the fifty thousand and the nine thousand, and you put as many trees, up to thirty-six as you can, that our staff is comfortable with and that will, will live, and those trees have to come down, because we don't want them falling on somebody's house and killing somebody, so I, I mean, I think you realize that David Weekly messed this up, we got that, but now how do we fix it? That's where I wanna get, I want, and I think the motion I made is fine to get us there, um, you know, if there's any other houses out there that are gonna have this issue before you, do you have any more foundations to pour out there?
No, we've done a final one, which is Lot Number Four, so everything's done.
So basically, for me, we gotta fix it, we gotta put as many trees back, and, and the fifty and the nine, I think is a small price to pay, that you don't have to come to code enforcement, you don't have to do that if the rest of them agree. Then we're done with it, it wasn't ideal, we, Council, we knew what's happening. Chief Drago stood right there two years ago and told us this was happening, and we, we sent our people out there and they kept doing it, so I think this gentleman's had enough, I think you'll go back and tell these guys that the council's pretty upset, and this is what we'd like to see, if the rest of them agree, um, and, and we move on.
If you agree, if you will agree to this, is this, do I still need to wait till April first, I'm just trying to understand.
Can I jump in there at that point, this point, and just sort of make, I don't think you, there's, there's not really a motion perfected yet, but let, let me just give an example of what could happen, I think, okay? If, for example, there was a motion that was approved that said there'll be two additional trees planted per lot, there'll be a nine thousand dollar contribution to the tree fund, there'll be a fifty thousand dollar donation to Friends of Oviedo, and there'll be thirty-six trees planted if a arborist, city arborist was to certify that they would be survivable, and that was the pass?
Not survivable, right?
Excuse me?
Sorry, was it not survive, not survivable or survivable?
The maximum number of the, the, as many as thirty-six trees that will be survivable.
Right.
Okay, if that were to pass, and then, it would, like you said, it takes the, the developer to sign the DO, if they signed it, performed at least insofar as the payment of the money, then it would be over with and they could build.
Okay, so I see what you're saying. So if we made the motion that they accept this before they close, before a CO is issued, and they paid the money, then they, they would, uh, meet the, right, they'd meet the terms.
They'd pay the money, they'd have the requirement to plant.
And then he can go take it back, but I have them coming back guns.
And then he can go take it back, but I have him coming back guns.
Which would run with the land, that's right. And then they would have the requirement to plant the up to thirty-six additional trees certified to be survivable, then it would all be done. They, they could close, assuming they signed it.
There you go. All right, so, Mr. Groot, let me just, so the motion then would be, as, as long as the fines are paid, before any further COs are.
Correct.
Are issued.
Correct.
COs will be issued as long as the fines are paid.
Correct. And then the other requirements run with the land, as to the trees, so.
Could you agree to that? Because then you can go take it back, and if they decide not to, then they're not gonna get the COs issued.
That was kind of a catch-21 situation, so yes. Yep.
All right.
Which I appreciate, by the way, putting the clarity, and that's kinda what I was getting from yourself.
I was gonna try to have a special meeting on the twenty-fifth for you to try to make your life a little easier, but, all right, that sounds like a good.
Hey, whatever, whatever you wanna do to make my life easier, I'd be very pleased.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All righty, so, we're a little bit all over the place here, so let me see if I can kinda bring it back in.
Mr. Mayor, one, one last thing, I didn't hear.
Are you gonna confuse me even more?
This, the shade structures.
Yeah, yeah, I got that.
Okay.
Perfect. I got, I got those written down. All right, so, this is your motion, so just follow me through.
I'm listening.
All righty?
Mr. Groot had it perfect, just to let you know.
I forgot the shade structure. I knew I was forgetting something.
I tied it together good.
All right, so, put back as many as, as, as they can, so you.
Up to thirty-six, as many as you can, up to thirty-six.
And then what happens with the balance of thirty-six that they, they can't put in?
They're paying the nine thousand.
They're gonna pay the nine into the tree.
They're gonna pay the nine thousand anyway into the tree.
Correct, yeah.
All right, so, so then the amended motion should be, we request that you plant as many trees on site as staff and the arborists feel as necessary or possible to re-landscape the area. You're going to do the recommendations of the staff, which is the two six-inch calipers per lot, correct? That's what was in there, I think. We're going to add the shade structures into the park, we're going to pay a penalty of fifty thousand dollars plus nine thousand into the tree bank, and until those penalties are paid, no COs will be issued, issued on the property.
Correct.
Did I sum it up?
Correct.
All right, now, is there, who is the second? Does the motioner agrees, does the second agree?
Yes.
That fifty thousand dollars comes from, say, you said it's a, you mean fine? That fifty thousand dollars, I believe, is a donation?
Yeah, donation.
Donation to Friends of Oviedo.
Friends of Oviedo, yeah, it's charitable, it's four, uh, uh, five oh one C three.
Do you want me to read that?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll lose the fine thing.
Mr. Mayor, there was at one point, I think, Mr. Cobb was talking about one shade structure and others were, but then the staff report talks about three, so I don't think that was firmed up, as to whether or not one or three.
Three shades.
Three shade structures.
Three shade structures.
Correct. Over the park bench and over two picnic tables.
Okay. Is that the motioner's understanding, is that the seconder's understanding?
That's my understanding.
That's mine, I'm reading it right here, that's good. Park bench and two picnic tables. Thank you, sir.
All right, so, I think we have a motion in a second. Mr. Cobb, do you wanna just read it back to us and make sure we're all on the same page? Dr. Korea is gonna, is all confused. I have it written down right here if you want it, it's scribbled.
Yes, I just want to clarify the timing of what we are going to request, because the money is easy, right, to pay, but the shade structure is not easy to.
Before the final CO is issued.
So that's, that's a compromise, they would have to do that compromise and, and.
Everything else is until the, up to the final CO. The final CO will not be issued unless everything here is done.
Okay.
Just, just to make a point, this, this DO will be recorded, so I'm sure David doesn't wanna sell a code violation to anybody, and if everything wasn't done and satisfied prior to that last closing, like you were just saying, they've sold the code violation to somebody, will probably not be happy. And there might be title insurance claims, lawsuits and all that, so all of it should be done by the first, last CO.
So, Mr. Groot, do we need to amend the motion to what Dr. Korea just asked us to?
No, I think it takes care of itself once it's recorded.
I, I think as far as, as far as, I would add the language into the motion, yes, sir. That the shade structures and the trees planted would be prior to the last CO for the subdivision.
Okay. Motioner agree?
Agreed.
Seconder agree?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so you want me to?
Yeah, now sum it up.
Tell you what I understand, okay. First thing is, is that you're authorizing the trees to be removed, and that the applicant will plant the two six-inch caliper trees on each.
We're only authorizing the trees to be removed after the monies are paid.
Right.
Okay.
Trees, the two six-inch trees will be planted on each lot in addition to the trees that are required through the subdivision plan. The applicant, prior to the issuance of, of the first CO coming up, the applicant will pay nine thousand dollars into the tree fund and will make a charitable donation to the Friends of Oviedo in the amount of fifty thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
The applicant will, prior, prior to the issuance of the final certificate of occupancy for the, for the subdivision, the applicant will plant up to the thirty-six trees required for mitigation that an arborist deems as survivable. And then the applicant will also construct the three shade structures within the park to cover the park bench and the two picnic tables.
Correct. And the trees that they plant, Mr. Cobb, will be the trees that are required by our code? They can't just throw in pine trees and call it a day?
Oh, well, pine trees are an acceptable tree according to Florida.
We want, we want shade trees, no pine trees. I think he knows what we want. All right, is everybody comfortable with that motion? Anything to add from Mr. Cobb?
I, I, I don't know if, this, this subject just really touches a nerve with me because of how many times it's come to council and, and how, just kinda, to me, kinda blatantly disregarded council was when it came. I, I would take it a step further, and until the money's paid, all construction gets stopped at the site, just to bring them to the table faster.
I don't know if we can do that.
Can we do that, Lonnie? Mr. Groot?
You could do it by agreement, but I'm, it's really a Florida building code issue, and that's the, that you put the building official, who's not here.
I think the only thing you can impact was any, is any house that is not currently under construction.
Right.
If it's under construction, then the building code has a series of, a series of actions that have to occur within a certain amount of time. And so, as they mentioned on, I think, two, three and four, you're already at final. And twenty-eight, you're at CO. Is that correct?
Not four, yeah, two, three and twenty-nine.
Two, three and twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, we're twenty-nine, final, and three, just about there as well, I assume.
And, and then they, I think there's only one other home that they've just now started construction on, so I, I think that would be very difficult for us, the only thing that I, the only thing I know that we could do is to halt inspections, but even that, once again, the Florida building code sort of dictates to what we have to do within a certain amount of time.
Okay.
I don't know if this makes you feel better or not, but I can tell you that what you're doing tonight, and it appears to be agreeable to the developer, is far better than the code enforcement processes that are available. When I say that, the developer, I'm sure doesn't, their, their issue's time, okay? So it may actually be better to run the clock out for years in terms of the code enforcement process, but that's not their, that's not their benefit. You're getting a better overall deal, if you will, than the code enforcement processes would have aggregately provided to you. Do you agree with that?
Yes. I think one thing you could do, and, and once again, I think you may wanna add language to your motion, and to, to, Mr. Pollock, what I would recommend is this, is that the trees cannot, like the mayor said, the trees cannot be removed until the nine thousand dollars is paid into the tree bank, until the fifty thousand dollar donation to Friends of Oviedo is made. And so what you're saying so then is that trees can't be removed and the COs cannot be issued until those two things occur, and then leaving the planting of the additional trees and the construction of the shade structures for the last CO, that gives them time to put, to put those in place, and, you know, and you've now addressed the entire neighborhood.
Now, Brian, you, you pretty, you think that this'll fly with your bosses?
I do, yeah. And the trees we've put in place, they're already started twenty-three tall, and beautiful trees, and I think, I think the remedy that you're coming up with will be beneficial to the community.
Why, why don't you just come on up to the microphone, I'm sorry.
So I retell another.
No, no, that's okay, the clerk just needs to be able to hear. Your, your response to the councilman's question was?
So yes, it will fly in front of our, our bosses, I think it's a very reasonable.
So in other words, we should ask for a hundred thousand.
No, I think the fifty thousand was, was very reasonable.
Did you?
I mean, I don't know if you know about David Weekly, but we have a very low, I know a lot of builders make a lot of money from their homes, we only have a six percent net income from, from our properties, and so we give a lot out when it comes to building. A third of all of our profits goes to charity anyway, and so one third goes to the family who owns the company, privately owned, another third goes back to employees and paying our overheads, but six percent is all we profit from, from building, so we're, we're not a high turnover. We build, you know, four hundred, three hundred homes within central Florida every year, and these are the things we do think about. Unfortunately, some of these things do get missed in transition between developer and builder, and we take responsibility for what we've missed. I take responsibility for my own community that I've inherited, and I just wanna give you guys a, a beautiful neighborhood that's clean, that, you know, those trees are directly underneath power lines. We know this area.
Twenty-foot trees are gonna look good there, that's.
The twenty-foot, foot trees are gonna look beautiful.
Can you do this? I think this, I just, I like when I make motions that everybody gets a little win here. Councilman Pollock, I think his concern is, is that this is gonna fly. Can you call Mr. Cobb before the week is over and let him know for certain that this, this is flying, the fifty and the nine? And if there's any issues, we have a meeting on the twenty-fifth, we don't have a council meeting on the eighteenth because it's spring break that week, but we could always, we have a, an option that we could do something, so can you let him know that everything we discussed tonight is flying?
To be, to be honest, Councilman, I, I would not be inclined to call a special meeting on the twenty-fifth.
No, I'm saying if they don't wanna pay the money.
Yeah, well, then they'll wait till the first.
Yeah, well, I would like to pay the money, I would like for us to pay the money, and uh.
You don't.
Yeah, this has, I just, you know, I've, I've gotta deliver properties to people who are expecting to buy homes, and I know it's not their fault that they're in this situation, and I represent, I'm their builder, you know, we're not, again, we're privately owned firm, so I work for the, the buyer, not for some people who don't even know who we are, so.
All right, good, well, we, we got a plan.
Also, for the, for the area in the park, which you say, yeah, the structure, you're talking about a tree structure, or you're talking about some sort of other shade?
Shade, shade structures, you know, the sails or something like that.
Got it, okay.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
That'll work.
All right, so, Mr. Cobb, you're clear on everything now?
Mayor, would you mind if I just run through it one more time?
Go right ahead.
Make sure I'm.
You're getting all this right.
Mind you take copious notes over there, so.
This is what, okay, so before the tree, this is number one, before the trees are removed and before issuance of the, of the certificate of occupancies, nine thousand dollars shall be played, paid into the city tree fund, and a fifty, a fifty, there will be a donation to the Friends of Oviedo in the amount of fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
The applicant shall plant two additional six-inch caliper shade trees on each lot in addition to the minimum lot required trees. The applicant will plant up to thirty-six trees with, throughout the community, throughout the subdivision, that are deemed survivable by an arborist, and the applicant will construct three shade structures in the park to cover the park bench and the two picnic tables.
Correct. And the, and the trees that they're gonna plant throughout the community, we don't want pine trees, we want something shade, shade trees.
Okay. And the planting of the shade trees and the planting of the, and the construction of the shade structures shall occur prior to the issuance of the final CO of the subdivision.
Correct. Motioner agree?
Yes, sir.
Seconder agree?
Yes, sir.
All right. Everybody good?
Yes.
All right, we're gonna call the question on the amended motion that's just read by Mr. Cobb. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
All righty.
All righty.
Thank you.
Run some checks over tomorrow.
I'm gonna stop now.
Mr. Boop, I have a funny feeling I'm gonna be here at like nine o'clock tomorrow morning handing you checks. All righty, got through that one. Discussion items, we have none, so Mr. Cobb, your report.
I have no report, Mayor.
All righty. Mr. Groot, you're up.
Nothing to see there, Mr. Mayor, thank you though.
Councilmember Britton.
Let's see here. Who let the dogs out? That was F U N Fund, Drew Barkinbrew on Saturday. There was, I don't know how many, do you have an estimate of how many people versus how many dogs? Couple thousand of each?
We think there was at least a thousand or more people issued.
It was, it was crowded, and it, and it was, everyone had a good time, so.
Anybody see that dog jumping for the frisbees? That, what was that dog, about ten feet in the air? Eight feet? That dog is nuts. That was fun to watch, sorry.
Good, good time. I, I think we're, we're starting to get to the point at Oviedo on the park where we've got some, some real legacy events that are, that are growing there, and they're really, it's really starting to take off, so, good job, tell, I don't see Carrie, but tell her good job, everything was, well. The only other thing I have is that I got an email from a, a citizen regarding the, the lighting district, and I just wanted to ask, is there a way we can at least provide some clarifications at the state of the city? The individual thought it was a one-time thing, and we were gonna get streetlights for the whole city for the one-time payment, and some misunderstanding, are we gonna talk about that?
All time.
Okay, all right, that's all I got, thanks.
And, and Councilman, I did reply to.
I, I saw your reply, but, you know, if it's one person, there's probably many more.
I, I was hoping that since he did not reply back, that he was satisfied with our response.
Well, I'm gonna give him a call anyway, but, yeah. That's all I got, thank you.
All righty. Let's see, looks like I'm up next. Councilman Britton and I went over to the Little League fiftieth anniversary on opening opening day, and, uh, that was extremely well-attended, they had, um, a whole group of people, it must have been thirty...
How, how many people did they list that are major league baseball players, former baseball players that came out of that league? It must have been two dozen over the fifty years.
Yeah, it was, it was, they had like, uh, two or three of them there, and then they had all those legacy folks, uh, who had played in Little League, they had the one family, the grandfather, the father and the grandson played in Little League.
Yeah.
And it was quite, quite...
And Ed Wiggins, uh, played and coached, all three of them.
That's right, it was, uh, quite the turnout, and, uh, I'm glad that we were able to split the council up, and I'm sure you guys can talk about Babe Ruth because you were over there. Uh, the Police Foundation had their golf tournament this past Friday, it looked like it was pretty well-attended, so we'll have to wait and see, uh, what kind of funds were raised. Uh, also I had the Police Awards Dinner last week, uh, which was exceptional to see, and it was Detective Chris George, I believe, who got Officer of the Year, am I right, chief? That was exciting, and kudos to the whole entire team, I mean, you know, the whole entire department, everybody, including this guy, uh, just does a great job, and, uh, you know, we appreciate everything, so, and it was great to be at that event. And as was quickly mentioned, the State of the City is this Wednesday night, it starts promptly at six-thirty, uh, five-thirty PM, there's going to be food trucks, a dessert truck, uh, folks want to come down right after work, grab a little bite, uh, come on in, it'll be at the amphitheater at Oviedo on the park, so, um, I hope everybody can make it because there are a lot of exciting things this year, and the, uh, the slides will be very, very informative, it's a, we're changing it up just a little bit this year, so I think everybody will, will have a great time. So with that being said, that is the end of my report, and we're going to move on to Deputy Mayor Pollock.
Drew, just let your whole staff know that that event was, was great, and we, we expect all the events from now on to be that great.
Monty Brown was pretty good the week before, too.
Yeah, yeah, that was really nice, and, um, the, the zip dogs, that, that little horse that they had, if we can put something like that at the, uh, at the new dog park, that'd be great, those dogs, it was fun to watch them. And, um, the, uh, the Babe Ruth League, um, it was, it was really cool to wa, to see the, uh, the youth, uh, there that have excelled, they, they, I think there was like four, four or five teams that went to the World Series and, and did very well at the World Series for Babe Ruth, and, uh, and the, the fields there are looking great, I, I know that one of them you're, you're working on right now, and, um, I mean, the, the grounds are looking great as well. Um, let's see, what else, um, yeah, the Police Awards, um, that was a, that was a great, a great evening, listening to all the, uh, all the stories of, you know, or the, of, you know, that, that have gone on throughout the year, it's always, it's always interesting to listen to those, and I wish those stories could get out more, of how, how much our police officers do for this community and, and, and what they do, so, that's all I have.
Excellent, uh, let's see, Councilmember Hinkin, you're up.
Um, just one thing, Chief Coleman, that was your first, uh, awards dinner as chief, right? Oh, your second? Boy, and that went fast. Um, well, just to piggyback on the mayor.
Second as chief already? Wow.
Wow. Um, man, you've been gone for a long time, eh? But, uh, chief, just to listen to the stories, you know, Gina tells me all the time, that's like her favorite event in the city, is your night, to listen to those stories, and, you know, I, I always see, and I always get worried when I drive home at night and I go out on four-nineteen and I see one of my boys out there with the lights on, making that walk to the side of the car, and you say, man, what is that worth? You know, um, you guys do some stuff in this city, I'll just leave it at that, that people don't see, and, um, you know, one of the things that always made me want to get up here is you guys and the firemen and make sure that this city was always safe, and man, you guys do an amazing job, some of the stories this year, and some of the things that we solved and put some bad people away, you guys are all to be commended, and, uh, it's not an easy job, it really is not, you all make it look easy, but that was a good night, and, uh, you know, your, your boys and, and girls, and one detective, and she had one award after another, you know, so, strong ladies over there as well, but thanks, chief, you tell everybody you did a great job, that's all I have.
All right, uh, Councilmember Chutnow, you're going to close this out.
Well, again, uh, just seconding what everybody else had about the awards dinner, it, it's always, it was always my favorite event, as a ass chief, and just to see the officers and, and the great job they continue to do for the city. Uh, as far as the golf tournament goes for the Police Foundation, uh, I understand that there's a couple of thousand dollars more than last year was raised for the foundation.
Excellent.
So it was a good turnout, uh, and it's last meeting I talked about the, uh, the texting while driving statute, and I got consensus to, uh, kind of look into that, and, uh, lo and behold, the whole statute changed. They, uh...
For the better or for the worse?
For the better, yep.
There we go.
And they amended it to go beyond just texting to distract the driving as a whole, uh, so it takes in things such as, uh, including reading, writing, performing personal grooming, applying beauty aids or similar products, interacting with pets or unsecure cargo, uh,